I mean, do I have to wait for that on the air sent at night?
Yeah.
There we go. I'd like to call the order, the November ninth Moundsview School Board meeting. Welcome, everyone. I would like to ask for a motion for adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving on, we would like to welcome the student recognition for fall activities. We will welcome Activities Director, Mr. Fink. Welcome.
Welcome. Hello. Well, I get the great honor tonight to represent both high schools, Moundsview and Irondale High School, and we, both schools did an amazing, amazing job with what they put on for the fall. It was great after COVID, and school got back to normal to really jump in and do some amazing things. And I think you're going to all be very impressed with not only the accomplishments of some of our athletic teams, but also strong recognition for all our fine arts and some of the clubs that we offer in our school district. So first up is students from Moundsview High School.
Good evening. Welcome.
I'm Will Skelly.
And I'm Elliot MacArthur.
And we're representing Moundsy Cross, Moundsy Cross Country. First, I'd like to thank our coaches, Coach Fleming, Coach Thompson, Coach Wentworth, and then Coach Pratt for a successful season. We won our conference meet, we won our sections meet, and we were third at state. The biggest highlight for me was conference because it was the meet where all of us like PR'd, we had like really good times. Boys Cross Country won, JV and varsity boys cross country won, and JV and varsity girls cross country won. So it was like a good team celebration, I guess. So yeah.
Yeah, and then just kind of talking about state here, we placed third at the state meet. Will and I were both all-state runners, and in the last three state meets, we podiumed as a team, which is the best in that span of any school across the coun- uh, state, I should say. So yeah, we have one last race this weekend in Sioux Falls called Regionals, so should be fun, and we'll get to go up and show what we got. So, thank you guys very much.
Congratulations for coming. Congratulations.
All right. Hi, everyone. I'm Sam. I'm part of the Moundsy Boys Soccer Team. So just a little bit about the team this year. We won state. Probably most of you know that.
Wow.
But, thank you. Yeah, so really successful season, obviously, but I think a really big highlight or part of the season was the kind of the comebacks. So we, over the regular season, we lost to Stillwater. And then during the section games, we beat them. I think it was the section, or I think it was the state quarterfinals, actually. And then for the section games, we lost to Park Center in a non-conference game. And then we beat them three to zero in the section finals. So that was a really big highlight. But yeah, I mean, I think for me, the biggest part of our success was our coaches, Joe Warren and Eric Stephen, and just the environment that they were able to create. It was super fun for me, for me, and I know for all the other guys in the team. Practice every day was just super fun. Great environment to be in. So yeah, that's all I have.
Congratulations again. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Hope. We're representing Soror, which is a female empowerment group at Moundsview. We're run by Ms. Ward. We meet like every other week, and we have around thirty to forty members.
Hi, my name is Giselle Lobley. I'm representing Soror, led by Ms. Ward. We, when we meet bi-week, every two weeks, we come together and talk about things in our school, how we feel with our teachers, and if we're feeling connected emotionally. And our goal is to create a safe space for the girls in Moundsview.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Olivia Voitia. We are from Cross Country.
Hi, I'm Abby.
I'm Eva Barsness.
And I'm Elizabeth Gregory, and we're the captains this year.
Yeah, so this season has actually been a really great season for us. We were conference, junior varsity and varsity champions, and then section champions. And then we placed sixth at the state meet. But I think most of our success honestly came just from the beginning of the year. We decided that instead of focusing on the titles, we just wanted to foster a good community. And so actually, the four of us worked hard with our coach, Jimmy MacArthur, to make it just a much more inclusive environment. And I think that that's the reason for most of our success, because it ended up just being a lot more fun, and people cared a lot more about each other. And then we were running as a pack, which helped us a lot and helped us do really well. So it's just been a really great year, and now, like the boys, we're running in Sioux Falls at Regionals this weekend. So we're really looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Welcome.
Hi, my name is Molly Austin.
I'm Katerina Smirichinsky.
And we're with Moundsy Girls Tennis. We just finished up a great season. We beat Edina for the first time in school history. We placed third at state, won sections. And then also, we played together in individuals and also placed third at state, so that was a lot of fun.
Our coach Scott Sunstrom trains us really well and likes to teach us life lessons that can be used both on and off the tennis courts.
Yeah, we love being part of the program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Hi, everyone. I'm Felix Ongara. I'm from the Irondale Cross Country team, cup ten this year. And we had a great season this year. We had a great performing. We had most of our, most of the kids in our team that were new, so they did a good improvement on their team. And I've been, I've been in the team for almost five years since I was seventh grade, so I think we did good this year. And I appreciate everything that the district supports for the team. So we'll ask for more if possible. So I appreciate everything you guys have done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Hi, I'm Danny Harvey. I'm with the Irondale Marching Band. This season, we went to US Bank Stadium for the state championships and placed first in our class. We also went down to Iowa and placed first in the state and swept all of the championships in all of the sections as well. We had a very successful season this year, thanks to in part to our new director, CJ Longbaugh. He's a fantastic educator and a great band director, and he's really good at what he does. As a member of the leadership team with the marching band, I feel that the responsibility lays as much on the students as it does on the educators. And I feel like the marching band does a great job at instilling that work ethic in the underclassmen that join our program. So yeah.
Wonderful.
It was a great season.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Welcome.
Hi, I'm Miles Collins.
And I'm Ada Vanderbilt.
And we are here representing Irondale Drama.
We had the wonderful opportunity to be in the Fall Musical of the Wizard of Oz, directed by Janet Peony.
Yeah, and we had a great opportunity and were able to use our new theater, our brand-new theater, to put on a really great show with a lot of new technological updates to it. Like, we were able to fly people. That was pretty cool.
And we had a lot of like new lighting and sound advancements too, which were very nice when it came to putting it all together, so.
Yeah, and we actually had a pit orchestra, so that was really awesome. Did not have them just on the side of the stage. Yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
I believe we may have some photographs.
Yeah, we got a bit of a presentation with some show pictures.
Now, just in case you haven't witnessed our new auditorium, we put together a very short clip of some scenes from our latest production. And it kind of shows you what kids are capable of doing, even though it makes you very nervous watching.
Well, congratulations, everyone. Thank you so much for being here. And those that are still competing in your fall sports, good luck this weekend. And we just appreciate you being here. So you are more than welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting and join us, or otherwise, you're free to leave. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, so moving along to 2.2 on the agenda, our student representative reports. I just want to make sure our representatives have not joined us.
No, I don't believe so.
Okay, thanks, Colin. So we will move on to 2.3, Open Forum. So at this time, the school board will hear comments from the public. Any interested speakers have signed up in the back of the room and have reviewed the open forum guidelines. We ask that speakers come to the podium as called. This evening, each speaker will be allotted a maximum of two minutes. So the first person that is signed up for open forum is Christine Leduke. Welcome.
Thank you. Yep, I'm Christine Leduke, and I would like to acknowledge the dedication and commitment of time represented by the school board and by the Equity Committee. I truly believe that everyone involved in the decision-making process regarding our equity curriculum acted in good faith, believing that they were making decisions which would benefit students. While I support the intent of the Equity Committee, I strongly object to the curriculum chosen to meet objectives. And while I was campaigning, I did have parents submit to me various homework that their children had, that the parents were upset about. So that's what I base this on. It confounds me and concerns me that as a team of intelligent and caring adults, that this curriculum could have been approved. It is so contrary to our district values. It fails to honor every student and every culture. It devalues many of our teachers. It does not create a respectful environment, and it does not promote community. In my opinion, it uses diversity. The diversity that we choose to celebrate, it uses to orchestrate division. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is, is it Paul Wixstrom? Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. I'm following Chris and similar message. My name is Paul Wixstrom. I'm the father of three graduates from Moundsview High School. Thirty-six years in Moundsview School System. I take a lot of, I have a lot of respect and admiration for the teachers and the staff in this district, and I want to see that continue in terms of high-quality education that my kids have received in Moundsview. However, I come tonight with some concern, especially after the latest election. So if you choose to continue the use of the current equity curriculum, this district will experience declining academic achievement, increased tensions between students, and increasing anxiety among the student population. I don't believe this is what we want in our school district. The curriculum of our district should be predicated on a common and correct understanding of American history and based on the will of the people and on the ideals of our constitutional democratic republic. My son once corrected me, goes, "Dad, we actually have a constitutionally limited representative democratic republic." And he learned that in the ninth grade at Moundsview High School. I hope that education continues. I invite the school board to discuss equal opportunity versus equity. That's an important debate, and it needs to come out in the open. Parents of the district, pay attention to the national conversation, most notably the recent Virginia 2021 state election, and other school districts across the nation. Within your household, ask your children questions about their day in the classroom. Pay close attention to their questions. Inform yourselves about the direction of the curriculum development in the Moundsview School District. My name is Paul Wixstrom. Thank you for letting me come to the podium and speak. I want to see this district continue a high standard of education. Thank you.
Thank you. Lois Cromrey is next. Welcome.
My name is Lois Cromrey. I live at 2363 County Road I, and I just want to give you information. I am reading from the work of David Barton, a historian. At the age of fourteen, Thomas Jefferson inherited one hundred eighty-seven slaves. At harvest time, Jefferson paid his slaves for the produce they had cultivated and harvested. When you give people money, you are giving them a form of power. Jefferson wanted to give his slaves a taste of power. Jefferson was a champion of blacks. In 1769, at the age of twenty-six, Jefferson introduced anti-slavery law in the Virginia Legislature. However, the King of England struck it down. In 1807, as President of the United States, Jefferson signed Article One, Section Nine of the Constitution that had a provision to ban importing all slaves after the year 1808. In 1820, Democrats allowed slavery in some federal territories with the Missouri Compromise. In 1854, the Congress, controlled by Democrats, passed the Congress Nebraska Act, which expanded slavery also into Wyoming, Montana, Idaho, and North and South Dakota. Jefferson was born in 1743 and died on July 4th, 1826, the fiftieth year of the existence of the United States. In 1865, the Thirteenth Amendment abolished slavery.
Thank you. The next person on the open forum is, is it Tao San? Tao San? Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, good evening. My name is Yao San, and I live in Shoreview. Today, I'd like to talk about health and mass education. I have a child in Turtle Lake Elementary School currently. So first, recently, we received information for vaccine for children. So I work as an engineer, so I am not an expert in this field. But I do want to let everybody know that on November 2nd, this past week, Congress, US Congress, has a hearing by Senator Ron Johnson. It lasts for about four hours about different stories about the vaccine, including a twelve-year-old participating in experiment. So I just want to, everyone, if you have a chance to take a look at the hearing in Senator Ron Johnson's website, and I do print it out this URL. If you are interested, you can, you can take a look there. That's for the vaccine. And another topic I'd like to talk is the math education. So I think our children will eventually compete in a worldwide environment where they need to compete for jobs and opportunities with Koreans, Chinese, and Japanese, and Russians, or all those nationalities. So I think we need to increase their vision and capability from elementary school on. For example, we could have some mass competition or mass interest groups after school, just like the music orchestras and those interest groups in our school district. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And our last person on open forum is Bob Johnson. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Bob Johnson. I live on 41 Nancy, 4192 Nancy Place. My daughter graduated from Moundsview High School in the year 2000. She was one of the top ten graduates in the school that year, basically because her mother and I worked hard with her. And she got a full ride at Northwestern University in Evanston and is now a diplomat for the United States and has served in China, South Africa, and now El Salvador. All of this is to say that parent involvement and input is key. My question, therefore, is are you in any way, shape, or form going to hide curriculum or put something into our students, i.e. the COVID shots, without express parental consent? Thank you.
Thank you. So moving on to Section 2.4, announcements. So upcoming meetings, we have a work session on December 2nd at 6:00 PM, and our regular board meeting will take place on December 7th at 7:00 PM. Shauna, could I ask you to read the gifts?
Yeah, thank you, Diane. So there were nine gifts for schools and programs received this period for a total of $6,173.92. And there were twenty gifts received for the Ralph Reader Food Shop this period for a total of $50,709.77. It is recommended that the board accept these gifts and extend our thanks to the donors.
Thank you, Shauna. All right, moving on to 2.5, Superintendent Lennox. Would you like to give your report?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Diane. As this is our first meeting back following the recent school board election, I just wanted to take this opportunity to publicly thank all of the candidates who ran campaigns this fall. These days, it is not easy to run a campaign nor hold public office, and we wanted all of the candidates to know that we appreciated their willingness to advocate for our students, for our schools, and for the community. The election results will be canvassed later in the meeting this evening. We've received those back from Ramsey County. But at this time, I did want to congratulate Shauna Bach and Diane Gleschin for being re-elected. And Yolanda McGee. and Yolanda McGee, who is the newest school board member for the Mounds View Public Schools. So congratulations to all of you. And then finally, I would be remiss if I didn't take just a moment to recognize Mary Jo Sager. Mary Jo did not run this year, as she will be ending her term, and we want to thank her for all the years of service that she's provided. For the public, I wanted you to know, this is not Mary Jo's last meeting. We do have one more opportunity in December, on December 7th, where we'll have the opportunity to recognize her for her service. So thank you, Mary Jo.
Thank you.
With that, I will end my report.
Thank you, Superintendent Lennox. All right, moving on to 3.0, approval of consent agenda. Can I entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? If none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We are moving on to 4.0, financial oversight. So we are welcoming, we are welcoming Lee, Director of Finance, and Bernice, Executive Director of Business Services, with Jackie, is it Hugel?
Hugel.
Thank you, from the audit firm Malloy, Montag, Karnalsky, Bratusovich, and Company, that we are going to hear about the 2021 audit report. Welcome.
Thank you. Well, tonight, like you said, I am here to present the audit results for the June 30th, 2021 audit year. My name is Jackie Hugel, and I'm a partner with MMKR. We conducted the audit this year. You should have received in your packet some information, the annual comprehensive financial report, which the district will be submitting to ASBO for an award. There's the special purpose report that summarizes the audit opinions, a corrective action plan, or as you'll see as we go through, there is no finding, so there's nothing on it, but, and then a management report, which is our MMKR document that I will be speaking through tonight or following through on the PowerPoint. Just to give a little timeline of the audit, we do come out in the district in the month of July and kind of complete our, what we call our preliminary fieldwork. So we do a lot of internal control testing, meeting with various staff, do our legal compliance testing, transaction testing, and then we come back a week at the end of August and a week in September, where we do the bulk of the fieldwork with your finance department staff and various other staff. And then from there, we work together to get it wrapped up, get the financial statements all prepared and put together to be here tonight to present the audit results. As many of you probably are aware, that the district did have a lot of turnover in this past year. Also, there's just one thing I did want to comment on, that the audit was truly a team effort. There were so many departments involved. As you're aware, probably, there's a significant amount of federal funding this year, so lots of departments involved and lots of individuals within the business office that spent a significant amount of time helping us get to where we are tonight. So with that, I'll start through the presentation. You know, our role as auditors is to issue an opinion on the district's basic financial statements. That's over the district audit, and then with that schedule of expenditures of federal awards. So as I mentioned, and you're aware of, there's a lot of significant increase in that federal funding this year. To give an idea, that scheduled expenditure of federal awards in the 2021 year that we audited was 15.8 million compared to 7.4 million in the prior year. So that just gives an idea of, as part of an audit, we have to do a lot of risk assessment of all these grants, and it did result in four programs being audited this year. So the child nutrition cluster, the special education cluster, the coronavirus relief funds, and the education stabilization funds. Like I said, there's a significant amount of time that went into that, and lots of departments that were involved in that process. As part of our audit, we also test the internal controls and compliance over the financial statement audit with that federal single audit, and then with the Minnesota state laws and regulations. So each year, the Office of the State Auditor releases a legal compliance manual with specific statutes that as auditors were required to test for. And for the audit results, we issued an unmodified opinion on that basic financial statement. Had no material weaknesses or instances of non-compliance to report over the internal controls and compliance of the financial statement audit. With the Minnesota legal compliance testing, we had no instances of non-compliance to report this year. And in that single audit of federal awards, we issued a clean opinion or an unmodified opinion, and we had no material weaknesses or instances of non-compliance to report. So overall, very good audit results. Like I said, there was no findings in a challenging year with a lot of federal grants to be audited. Moving forward, I have some slides on the financial results. This is a graph of the statewide unrestricted operating fund balance. This is one of the only graphs that we have with statewide information. From the 2020 year, your district ended at 21.3%, and that's compared to the statewide average was also 21.3%. You're seeing for the 21-year, an increase in that fund balance moved you up to a 30.2%. And obviously, there is no statewide data available now. That'll probably be available early next year after all the districts have submitted their financial results. This is a table of the governmental fund revenue per student ADM served. We do have the statewide and metro area averages for the last two years. For the 2021 year, the Mounds View School District, the revenue per ADM served was a $17,703. That's an increase of about $1,700 per ADM from the prior year. A lot of that you're seeing is in that general fund area. Most of it's in the property taxes as approved with the annual levy every year. And then you're also seeing the increase in the federal sources there, once again with the COVID funding. You're seeing a small increase in the food service area, about $150 per ADM. The district did have change, programming changes this year. With COVID, lots of districts operated under that summer food service program and saw increased participation resulting in the increased revenue. Similar table of the governmental fund expenditures per ADM served. For the 2021 year, it was $16,216 per student served, increase of about $200 from the prior year. A lot of that increase you're seeing in that general fund area, dollars going into the elementary and secondary regular instruction area. The next few graphs I have will focus specifically on the general fund. This is of the general fund financial position, give some trend history for the past five years, the cash balance, that unassigned fund balance, and the revenue. The cash balance at year-end was about $57.5 million, an increase of about $15.7 million from the prior year. And that unassigned fund balance was $38.6 million, which was an increase of about $13 million from the prior year. And then this next table takes that total fund balance in the general fund of $43.9 million, and it splits it down into the various components. So you have, at year-end, you have non-spendable fund balance of about $550,000. Non-spendable is anything that's tied up in prepaid items, some of the district has already prepaid at year-end. The restricted fund balance of 1.4 million is mainly restricted for future operating capital dollars and some achievement and integration. The assigned fund balance at year-end is about 3.2 million. That is assigned for future school building carryover dollars. And then that leaves the unassigned at the 38.6 million, and that represents 23.9% of the total expenditures of that fund, which is slightly less than three months of operations. So within that district fund balance policy. It shows a graph of the adjusted EDM and the pupil units the district has served the past five years. The EDM for the 2021 year that we audited had an estimated EDM of about $11,500, saw a decrease of about $225 from the prior year. As you can see from the graph, the district has had stable enrollment, and we did see a decrease this year. That's some of the impacts of the COVID and similar to what other districts in the area are seeing as well. Shows a graph of the general fund revenue by category. The total general fund revenue were about $175 million. It's about 3.8 million over budget, and about $14.4 million from the prior year. The increase from the prior year, majority was in that property tax area with the increase in the levy as approved annually each year. And then once again, the federal sources saw an increase of about 3.8 million with that new federal funding, the coronavirus relief dollars, and the education stabilization funds. And then the variance of budget was also in those same two areas, looking at property taxes and federal. They were both over budget, about 1.3 million. Some of that is just due to more than anticipated funding, you know, not sure what you expected or how much was being recognized in the current year. There's a similar graph just of the various object categories of the general fund. The total general fund expenditures were about $161 million. They were about 1.2 million more than last year, but about 9.6 million under budget. The change from the prior year, you saw a few different areas, your salaries and benefits went up, that's as approved with the contractual agreements. Supplies and materials saw an increase compared to last year. The district had purchased some Chromebooks for some distance learning. And then that was offset by purchase services were down, decreased transportation costs as the district was moving between some hybrid and distance learning models, the transportation was down. In those same areas, you're seeing when you look budget to actual, you know, purchase services is under budget, once again, talking some of that transportation, and when in distance learning models, not as much utility cost in the current year. And salary and benefits were under budget, the health insurance costs came in less than anticipated and fewer staff in some areas. There's a couple other operating funds, specifically your food service special revenue and your community service funds. Both of these saw good years and challenging times. The food service fund had an increase in fund balance of about 1.6 million. Just looking current year to prior year, there was increased activity, as I mentioned, the district operated under that summer food service programs, had increased participation this year. And then the community service fund had an increase in fund balance of about 1.7 million. Some of the activity in this fund had decreased from prior year. Overall, the expenditures were looked at, and some of those areas were curtailed to help with the increase in the fund balance. One comment I do want to make in the community service area, you know, although the total equity is positive in this fund of about 2 million, there is one category, the restricted for early childhood family education program, does have a negative deficit of about 1.2 million. So that is one area I'd recommend the district should be reviewing that area, make sure they have the best way to finance that program going forward to eliminate that deficit. And then the last slide I have here just summarizes that district-wide statement of net position. So if you're looking in your annual comprehensive financial report, there's all the governmental funds that the district operates under, general fund, food service, community service. Those all get rolled up into what's called an entity-wide financial statement, and it includes all the capital asset activity of the district. It includes all the long-term liabilities, any pensions of the district. So this gives a snapshot or a picture of that statement of net position, which overall the district, when you include all those activities, saw an increase of about 20.6 million. If you kind of look at the bottom, those are what we call the components of net position, that net investment in capital assets increased about 3.1 million. That's all correlating with, you know, the capital assets the district has each year, offset by depreciation and any debt used to purchase those assets. The restricted increased about 3.5 million. A lot of that is that restricted for food service and community service, how you saw the increases in those fund balances. And then the unrestricted is up about 13.9 million. Some of that is those PERA and the TRA statewide pension liabilities, as you're required as a local government to put your share on the books. Those can fluctuate from year to year as far as what the unfunded liability is, as well as the district had an overall improved fund balance in the general fund. So with that, I would open it up if there are any questions.
I have a question. Will there be additional funds that will be incorporated into next year's audit, like from the federal or some other location?
Yeah, a lot of the federal funds are several years to spend them. Every bucket's a little different as far as what the period of performance is.
Okay.
But yes, there is still federal funds going forward still.
Any other questions?
Just a comment. Thank you to our financial staff. We had some transition this year, and it was a challenging year in many ways, and it's always wonderful to have an audit with no findings. So congratulations. Well done.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right.
You need a motion.
You need a motion. Yeah. So can I entertain a motion to approve the 2020-2021 audit report?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So moving on to 4.2, quarterly budget amendments and report, we will welcome back Bernice. Hello again.
Hi. And I'm here this evening to talk about the budget amendments, and they're just the quarterly budget amendments, and they do include some of those federal dollars, and so that's what the increase is reflecting.
Any questions for Bernice, or any discussion regarding the amendments and report? I know we talked about this on last Thursday at our work session, so we did talk about it in great detail, but any final questions or comments? All right, so it looks like we need, so can I get a motion to approve the quarterly budget amendments and report?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Bernice. Moving on to 4.3, canvas votes. Superintendent Lennox?
Yeah, so again, as a follow-up to the recent election, at the conclusion of school board election, it is necessary for the school board to approve an abstract of votes cast, and in your packet, you will see that that is included. We received that from Ramsey County. So it is recommended that the board approve that attached abstract of votes cast that has been received by Ramsey County elections.
Great. Any questions? All right, can I entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to 4.4, resolution issue certificates of election. Superintendent Lennox?
So these flow together, and as a follow-up to the canvassing of votes that we received that you just approved, it is necessary for the board then to adopt a resolution authorizing the issuance of certificates of election, and that goes because we had three open seats to the top three vote-getters. Those certificates of election would be for Shauna Bach, Diane Gleschin, and Yolanda McGee. So again, it's recommended the board adopt that attached resolution.
Great. Any questions? All right, can I entertain a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to 5.1, updates, AMSD. Jim, would you like to start us off?
Yes, the Association Metropolitan School District's Board of Directors met on Friday morning. We spent some time learning a little bit about the state's revised social studies standards, which I'm sure that we will hear a little more about going on from Dr. Todd Beach. The legislative committee spent some time on their 2022 priorities, which they will formulate and get together before the 2022 session, and much like our activity this evening, we went through an audit, and there were no findings, and the organization was found to be in very good shape. So financially, so that is my report from AMSD.
Thank you, Jim. All right, we'll move on to legislative, or excuse me, 916. Mary Jo?
Okay, Jo. Let's see. At 916, we got an update on some of the challenges with the special education students with regard to COVID. We've had a difficult time at 916 being able to fill substitute vacancies. There's been a lot of staff absences because of illness or other issues, so we got a great report on that. We've had a vacancy at the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Coordinator since last spring, and we had somebody, and they are no longer with 916. So the staff and other leadership took a look at what exactly was needed in that role and revamped it a little bit, and that vacancy is now out for reposting, and hopefully there'll be a great person applying and selected for that. And lastly, the joint powers agreement has been approved by the superintendents, and I think you guys have all been updated on that. I'm assuming, superintendent, that you're... I'm assuming, Superintendent, that your questions were all answered and addressed.
Yep.
So that'll be great, that hopefully the goal is to have that fully executed by the first of the year, twenty twenty-two. Can I talk about Ramsey County?
Yeah, Ramsey County.
Okay, so Ramsey County League is having the meeting that's, we have one meeting a month. It's free to all member districts, staff, anyone that the superintendent or board would like to have there, depending on what the event's going to be. This Friday, it's NAMI, the National Alliance on Mental Illness, is going to do advocacy training for mental health. So that should be interesting, and you're all welcome. It's from seven thirty in the morning till nine on Friday, the twelfth. And then just a heads up, if you're interested in the annual meeting, so you can get it on your calendars, it's December ninth from five to eight at the Maplewood YMCA Community Center. Justice Alan Page, a former Viking and Minnesota Supreme Court Justice, is going to be the, one of the key speakers, and Eileen, I won't even try her name, I'm sorry, I apologize, should turn off, working at the Minneapolis Federal Reserve and was a former Met Council Chair. So they will be there. I'm sure you'll get invitations, but if you want to go, everybody's welcome.
Thank you, Mary Jo. All right, moving on to six dot one, school board member reports. Does anyone have any updates that they would like to share?
Big congratulations to all our students. Sounds like we had a lot of state tournaments, but, you know, the joy of participation's just important, so, but it was fun. I made it down to the U.S. Bank Stadium, and unfortunately, I didn't get to see the Irondale Band, but that sounded like a great experience, too. You know, congrats to our candidates and our colleagues who ran for election this fall. It's always hard to put your name out there and go and campaign, so your commitment to the community is appreciated, and, you know, I'd just like to say I value the public input, and it's very important, and it's very, it's been very civil in this district, and to me, that's greatly appreciated. And just a big thanks to all our veterans. You know, November eleventh is a date to remember. I had my father and his five brothers fought in World War II, and it's always very special to me. So that's it for me.
Thank you, Jim.
All right, great. Anyone else?
Ditto to Jim, just on everything.
Yeah, Jim. Well, I, I went to the Wizard of Oz at Irondale High School on Sunday, and the play was amazing, the new auditorium, as Activities Director Chris Bink said, it's great, and saw all the technology, and people were flying, and, but the singing and acting was amazing by our students, so just wanted to commend them all for that, so.
There's another play coming up this week at Edgewood, Matilda, they're putting on Matilda, so I'm excited to go see that this weekend.
All right, anything else? Is there anything else to come before the board? All right, meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.